Order the City of Elsworth Plan Board Meeting for November first, 2023. Introductions, starting with Mark.
Mark Rich, board member.
Welcome back.
Ouch.
No, no.
Welcome back. Nelson Gill, member.
John Delio, Chair.
Rick Wiles.
Rick Wiles, way.
I'm here.
Oh.
Mike Hay, you have an alternate.
Patrick Lyons.
Voting alternate tonight.
Voting alternate. Voting alternate.
And staff introductions.
Matt Williams, City Planner.
Lori Roberts, Code Enforcement.
Thomas Cannon, Fire Inspector.
I was with all that assistance City Planner.
Okay. Second night of agenda adoption of minutes from, excuse me, October fourth, 2023, regular meeting. Any additions, deletions? Any motions to accept?
Motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
All in favor? Please vote. Thank you.
Jeez. Yeah, I got stuff to do here.
Okay. Number three, revision to an approved subdivision entitled Joy Woods for applicant owner Coastal Medical Realty LLC. The proposal is to remove a right-of-way on the property of the applicant. The subject property is approximately 2.11 acre lot located at 128 Bucksport Road, Tax Map 133 Lot 14-1 in the urban zoning district. Is someone here representing Coastal Medical Realty?
Guess that'd be me tonight.
Okay.
Chip Haskell, Project Manager, Civil Engineer with Haley Ward. Been a little while since I've been up, been down to Ellsworth, I guess. Good to see you all again. Should be a relatively straightforward one to get you started tonight. This is apparently now the sixth revision to this subdivision of Joy Woods. And I did note that this right-of-way was apparently added under the fifth revision. But yeah, you'll note on the northeast corner of Lot 6B, which is kind of on the right-hand side of your seat. Get your plans open. Excuse me. So Lot 6B there, kind of on the right-hand side, like I said, there was on the upper right corner of that lot was a, I believe it was a 75-foot easement? 74-foot easement benefiting Lot 6A originally. You know, I've gone in and sort of erased those, the line work to show that easement, but the gentleman that owns Coastal Medical Realty also is the owner of Alps Holdings, who owns Lot 6A. That easement serves no purpose for him now and as he evaluates what he's going to do with these properties, that kind of encumbers this property when it doesn't need to. So he's looking to get that extinguished.
One note, the right-of-way was never actually beaded from Lot 6B to Lot 6A, so it was just on the plan. It was never, the legal right, right-of-way was never transferred. So it's just a revision to a piece of paper, essentially. There was no legal right given officially.
Is there actual right-of-way in existence on the deeds?
No, so it was never deeded. It was just on the plan.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure. He never apparently recorded it or something. I don't know.
I mean, when it came a couple of years, three years ago, it never was. I mean, it was kind of a strange request to begin with.
Yeah.
Granted, they put in the right-of-way and nothing ever happened.
You said it was revision number five?
This, this is now revision number six, but yep.
You're at the max.
Yeah, right.
Used up all your chits.
Exactly. Exactly. Well, this is my first one on this one. Does that count?
Possibly.
Any questions? Any issues from staff?
No.
I'll open the public hearing. And I guess there's nobody here. I'll close the public hearing. Let's do the wishes of the board.
Let's see, we're, I'll make a motion to accept a, an approved subdivision entitled Joy Woods for applicant owner Coastal Medical Realty LLC to, which basically is to remove a right-of-way on the property of the applicant.
Second.
All in favor?
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
We gave her all this bounce. And straightforward. Nicely presented.
It was a tough one, I'll tell you. Gave me a rough my money tonight.
No PowerPoint?
Exactly. Exactly.
Item number four, preliminary plan review of a major use site plan entitled Synergium Elzer Solar for owner Samuel Robert Shay Given and applicant Synergium Elzer LLC. The proposal is to construct approximately 10-acre solar site. The subject property is approximately 55-acre parcel located on Mariville Road, Tax Map 59, Lot 15-1 in the urban zoning district. Someone here representing the applicant?
Yeah, my name is Evan Jones with Jones Eschitz, and we put together preliminary application here for this project. Like you said, it's a solar site that's. Is he on the call? I, I've got Halil here, too. I think he's on the call. He's with Synergium Solar in.
Hi, y'all. How you doing? I have, it's cutting in and out, so I have a little bit of audio problem here, but I'll try to.
So this is, the solar site's just under 10 acres. Currently, the output is set at two megawatts. Recent development earlier this week, there's some new, I guess, standards from the PUC. They're looking for smaller output solar projects, so there's a high likelihood that this would get cut down to one megawatt now. So the, the output and the size of the panel area most likely would get cut to one megawatt. We had discussions about maybe putting energy storage and outputting one megawatt during the day and one megawatt at night and keeping the two megawatts, but we're not currently in an area that's zoned to allow for energy storage. So the, as of right now, the most likely plan would be to cut the output in half by cutting the amount of panel area in half. So the access to the site is via a road on the east side of the panels. There's a turnaround at that end of that road, as well as a turnaround near the, where the transformers and the output from the solar site would be. A natural vegetated buffer would be left around the entire site, including 100 feet on the east side next to Mariville Road, 40 feet to the south abutting the property owner, which is Versant Power, 500 feet to the west, because that's all the way out to the power line, and 165 feet to the north, property owner. So that, that area would be left wooded. Everything else would be revegetated per the, the city ordinance, which calls for a mix of wildflower and pollinator species. Fencing would be surround the entire site, and that would, that would be chain-linked fencing. And there would be a gate to access the site, and the fire department would have access through a knock box to the, to the location. And like I said, we didn't want to cancel on you folks, that our plans might be changing. We still wanted to get in front of you, but most likely the size, the size of the project would, would be cut in half from what you're looking at right now. Currently, there's 9.29 acres panel area, so it would be pretty much directly cut in half moving forward.
I mean, is that something that PUC is?
Yeah, and actually, Halil, you can probably explain a little bit better what, what the changes were that they're now asking for smaller outputs.
Yeah, so it's really due to some regulatory changes at the state level with the recent legislation passed by the state legislature that requires any net energy building projects to be operational by the end of next year if they're larger than one megawatt. And it, it's probably going to be challenging to be able to meet that deadline with some of the supply chain issues that are currently going on, as well as the timing of, you know, with the I-39 requirements, which are the cluster studies performed by the utilities in Iceland. So, you know, given these new legislative requirements, you really need to keep the, the project size just below that one megawatt size to, to avoid that requirement.
And then as far as additional permitting beyond municipal, this project actually already received a stormwater permit by rule from DEP, as well as a decommissioning permit from DEP. It was just, needs to be figured out how the bond or however that payment would be handled through the, the city. But again, that's all may change now, now with this small requirement.
Yeah, so for this plan, if it does shrink, you know, just the board can look at the layout generally and just kind of your calculations. If they work for the size of a development, it'll work for a smaller one, but you're just going to have to update calculations throughout to match the new size.
Right.
And when requests, you know, came up, and all that's for Thomas's opinion, but there is like an exemption to the 20-foot-wide road rule. If possible, you can move it just a way. If it's going to be smaller, it might be more than a meter away from the wetland to make the road fully 20 feet. Is that something you'd like to see? Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's, if it's, if we're shifting panels or eliminating panels, I think we can, it'd be easy enough to eliminate that wrong way of shifting them.
So it's not zoned to have solar panels, but not energy storage?
Yes. So in our industry, industrial zone, our business park zone are the only two zones that allow battery storage as a standalone use. If, you know, say you're going to do energy storage to power your on-site use in the other zones as an accessory, you could do it similar to solar panels anywhere. But because the solar panels wouldn't be using the energy that's being stored, it's not an accessory used to the solar panels. It would be going into the grid, which makes it a standalone use, which isn't allowed outside of those two zones.
This is the urban zone?
Urban zone, yeah.
How, how very urban. And it's.
We're, we're right on the fringe. We're about 1,800 feet away from the business park zone.
Is the Versant lots next to it zoned for?
They're zoned that, in a way that it couldn't be done with business park.
Yeah, well, I've just, you know, have considered approaching the city about a zoning change for the lot.
We, we have, and like I said, this came up on Monday at four o'clock. So we had a call with.
Sorry, the Versant lot is zoned urban still, sorry.
Yeah, so in terms of distance from us to the zone that does allow for energy storage, we're about 1,800 feet away from the business park. There's two properties.
There's two, two lots.
Two properties in between. One's owned by Versant and the other is owned by developer.
It's our city, the city solar.
That's the, your community solar project.
Yeah. Well, I think this would be an appropriate, in my opinion, an appropriate lot to consider, as are those two lots to be rezoned to a use that would allow battery storage. And that's something the city needs to think about moving forward for energy projects, being able to co-locate both production and storage, especially for renewables.
Yeah, I mean, I spoke briefly to the applicant about that yesterday, the potential, like if they were serious about it, they could try and coordinate with these two other property owners and put together a request for rezoning for the three lots. But also, you know, so you would have to look at what's really the benefit besides assisting, you know, one developer and doing that.
Let me back up a second. Do you guys want to do storage? Like if it were allowed?
Yes. Yeah, we, we would. What we would do if energy storage was allowed in that zone is we would keep the panel area the same, add energy storage, and be able to output to the grid after the sun goes down as well. And by throttling that output, we remain under that one megawatt, but we're doing it during the day and at night.
Basically, it'd be the same amount of output, but you do it in 24 hours.
Spread out over a period of 24 hours as opposed to just during the day.
And that's better for the grid, too.
It is, and I, I think Matt and I were just talking about this. I think that's a direction that, there's not many. There's a few projects that are permitted throughout the state for energy storage, but I think that's a direction. Everybody's gone to the tracking units because they're so much more efficient, and I think the next step is, is energy storage to allow the use at night.
I just wanted to, and the ones that are there now, used to be Sunrays, which is a different name now. And if the zone did get changed, including there, would the school, would they be able to put in energy storage? And Sunrays send their electricity to their storage?
I'm, I've, I got about running the cables to have that voltage travel. Evan spoke about, they might just want to put their own on.
Oh, yeah.
But, you know, kind of like, they may not have the space or anything. I have no idea. But yeah, they theoretically then would be able to put their own energy storage on that one.
There's an efficient, I'm not electrical engineer, I'm not really on the solar design side, but the, they have to run low voltage from between the panels and the energy storage, and there's a, a voltage drop and an energy loss the further you have to run. So even running 1,000 feet, 1,800 feet, you're losing efficiency. It's, it may be feet, it may be possible, but it may not be economical. I, and again, it's, you want it as close as possible for that reason.
But if, but if you were able to include energy storage here, you'd keep the array the same size as it is now, is that what you said?
We would.
As opposed to cutting in half?
As opposed to cutting it in half, and we'd, we'd store that extra half and output it at night.
Correct.
Oh, then PUC is okay with that.
Yeah, and, and like, Halil works with them on that side of things, but yeah, that would, that would be, I think they would probably prefer to see that because it's more resilient to the grid.
Not a fair question for you guys, so I'll ask you, anybody that might know the answer. The, so the legislation to get the projects done for anything that's greater than a megawatt, I think by the end of next year?
Yeah.
Does anybody know what the motivation is there? Why?
I don't. Halil, do you know what the motivation behind the pushing the size to be finished by next year is?
Unfortunately, I, I don't know what the motivation is. I just know that's the legislation that came out.
So the follow-on question, if you can't build what you want because of that, would you come back, would you do half now, come back later to a second project at a later time?
If it was resold? Yeah, we, we may. Like an expansion, do a megawatt now and expand it later.
This is out of scope for us, but this just seems legislatively inefficient. Why?
Legislature's never done anything.
Evan, sorry. There's some audio issues, so it was cutting in and out, but did I hear someone ask about if we can do one megawatt now and then a second one later contingent on something?
If you, if you were precluded by the sled, by the, by the current ruling to build what you want now, would you do like half now, half later? Is that something we would expect from you guys?
Yeah, so I don't know if we'll be able to do that because from an interconnection perspective, we have to figure out now. I mean, I guess we could, we might be able, in theory, to submit a totally new interconnection application for that second one megawatt. But at least for this project, the way it is right now, it wouldn't be a half a project. It would just be self-contained, one, either one or two megawatt, whatever, whatever would be allowed from, on the zoning or permitting side.
Got you. And it's not my intention to put ideas in you guys' head, but what I'm trying to fish for is what would we expect the year after or the year after that? If this happens this way, would we see you again the year after, and what would we be talking about then? So it's kind of one of them.
Yeah, right now, it, I, we'd be just looking at what's proposed here. Like Halil said, the interconnection process is complex, so they look for a fixed number from you of what you're gonna, what you're gonna put out.
How big is this, the storage, for lack of a better word, unit that you might put on here? And, and is there space for it?
Yeah, that.
Given where the wetlands are and all?
That's a, that's a good question, and one that I don't actually have the, a specific answer to yet because we would have to get that from the electrical engineers. There's certainly more room on this site that is, is upwind where, where you could put that. It's, it would trigger, you know, if we, if we did, this two-megawatt area plus energy storage, it would likely permit, trigger more permitting with the state as well because that just added area. So we would, we would have to go through that process as well. But I, I actually don't have the square footage for you because I'm waiting to hear that.
Yeah, we would have to do, you know, detailed design if that would even be an option. We could certainly do that, but I mean, just high level, it's certainly a lot less than what we need for the solar. You know, we're probably, you know, talking about, you know, tens of thousands of square feet, you know, maybe half an acre or an acre or something like, in that range as opposed to like, you know, nine or, or 10 acres now, whatever.
And this array is nine now, right?
Yeah, it's 9.3, basically.
So 10%?
So 10% additional area, yeah.
Yeah, general rate, you know, high level without committing to, you know, without a detailed design. These are containerized, you know, containers that are holding the energy stores, like a, kind of like on a pad. They'll sit on a pad, so it takes up a lot less space. It's like a giant battery as opposed to spread out solar cells.
Matt, I guess I would just ask if, if this changes from what we have right now to including battery storage? Is, does it come back for a final, or has that changed so much that you'd have to come back for a preliminary?
Well, so, I mean, he can, they can come and get the approval for the solar if they end up wanting to add or adding the solar store or the energy storage. Have to come back for two meetings because they're adding a new use to that lot. So it would just be a fresh, two meetings looking at the energy storage.
Yeah.
So, so what you're saying is they can, the array field can be approved? And then they need to come back again for the storage unit?
Correct, because the solar can operate at its own use without the energy storage. So you can approve that and have that.
You guys okay with that? The fire department?
What's that?
Come back again a second time?
Yeah.
My question for that is, the medium that's being used for storage, lithium-ion batteries?
I, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that.
That's why I'm okay with them coming back for another meeting to provide us with that information.
That's a big, that's a big situation that they need to be involved with.
Right, and, and again, I, I don't have that from the electrical engineers.
I will say that these guys have actually got way ahead of this whole project before they even came to a, came to the first TRT meeting. They were already having conversations with us through email, through the phone, through Zoom, before they even did a, did a first submittal of asking questions. And they've been on top of it since then of getting, trying to get their stuff figured out. And there's some stuff in here that's missing that they weren't able to get in on Tuesday that I know has been done because I've already reviewed it. That will be there for the final.
Okay.
Yeah, it, we would, we would submit those designs and have, have a review process for them.
I think it would be appropriate to do the both of them, like you said, about the question. Because as I look at it and what from my experience, and I had some questions about it, because your decommissioning plan has nothing or no narrative in there for the decommissioning of storage batteries. And that's a big, that will be a big dollar item.
Yeah. Yeah, that would, that would have to be revised as well.
That would have to be included, or that the decommissioning plan would have to be updated or whatever.
Yeah, I mean.
Does, does the decommissioning requirement apply to the storage stuff as well as the regular farm stuff?
Yes, and then the, it's an Article eight, I think it was one of the new things we added as a performance standard under.
I just, I think we haven't had one yet.
We just haven't had one.
Right.
Yeah, and again, I mean, we'd have to get that rezoned first anyways, so we're talking about. We'd have to get a rezone, and then we would submit to you folks again. Well, we'd, we'd submit to these folks, have them review it, do fire department review and everything like that on the new decommissioning plan, the new fire department access, and then.
So, so what's the advantage of actually taking action on this tonight with so many things in the wind?
Well, yes, there's not so much in the wind just for solar.
Okay.
So you can, the solar is its own use. So the solar, if they wanted to, they can come for, they're coming for preliminary for solar tonight. And they could theoretically get approved for the solar without the storage being considered. So that could be its own use. The storage will then come as its own separate set of two meetings after they've rezoned potentially, which isn't guaranteed at all. And so that would have to go, does this rezone have to come to you first and then go to council to approve the change to the map and then the zoning map? And then they would be able to come back for the two meetings for the storage.
But there's still a second meeting required for this, or what you're saying is that it would be so changed that, you know, that the second meeting for the revised proposal would also kind of cover this?
No, there's a second meeting just for the solar.
Right, so next month, say?
So, yeah, next month theoretically.
And then there's two more?
If they decide the board wants the solar or the storage, there'd be like three meetings.
Three, one, one for the rezoning?
One for rezoning, and council, I guess, would be the fourth meeting technically. And then there'd be two for whenever they're ready to bring the energy storage to you. There'd be a preliminary and final for the energy storage.
Because it kind of sounds like you're, there are a time constraint to get this approved, to get it finished by the end of next year.
There's two scenarios that we would go down the road of. The first is the energy storage is not feasible for us, and we just cut it in half, cut the area in half, come back to you folks with a, with a one-megawatt design, just solar, no energy storage. And the other scenario would be that we petition for a rezoning and, and add that energy storage and come back to you with a design that would have energy storage. I think probably the most likely scenario right now is this is going to get cut in half, and we're just going to do solar, and it's going to be half the size, so.
So Matt, if they go onto that theory that they're probably going to cut it in half, I mean, we have a preliminary asking to approve the plan for two. If they cut it in half, can I come back as a final?
I, so.
Would I have to come back as another preliminary?
No, it's a decision the board gets to make. My recommendation would be allowing to come back for a final because they're just changing calculations. We kind of went through this with another solar project earlier that, you know, the larger project meets all the requirements and standards that the city has. They're just reducing their impact overall. And they've, you know, they've learned the ordinances, they know what needs to be provided, so they're not really missing anything. It's just changing some calculations and numbers on the, on the application.
Yeah, put that on the AWOL property.
Yeah, it's not all that different than saying here's six units versus five units between the preliminary and the final. Right. Recent stuff. Okay.
So I, I have a question, actually. Is there a third option, we can go for a final for the two-megawatt and then go for a rezone? And if the rezone falls through, then revise it to one-megawatt after the final, or is that not an option?
You can, you could do that. You could, oh, yeah, you could do that. You could come and get the two-megawatt. You could stick with what you have and come for final for the two-megawatt. And then, yeah, if you try the rezone, if you really want to do that, and it falls through, you'd have to come back for a third meeting to revise your major use site to strengthen the plan.
And how difficult would it be if we already received final approval for two-megawatt, just to cut it in half to one-megawatt if, if the rezoning fell through?
So because you got final approval, you would have to come back for revision, so that would be the third meeting that would be required.
Okay.
I think the, the question, how difficult, I, looking around, I, I wouldn't anticipate it would be very difficult to drop from a two-megawatt to a one-megawatt design if the two-megawatt design was previously approved, and you're talking about less material for the one-megawatt. I would not anticipate. Got you.
As long as the law, the rules don't change.
Well, it's some of the issues that they have with the current site plan. If, if the, the array itself was shrunk down, some of those issues would go away, you know, in terms of like the 20-foot road all the way through or get, being able to get around the back of it, if, you know, which is hard, hard to do now, but if you shrunk the array down, it would be easy to do, so. Yeah, that would be, in a sense, it would be good news, Frank.
So if you, if you did shrink from two to one, would you have to reapply to the DEP for your decom- for your decommissioning application because you've changed?
Yeah, we would change that amount because the cost is going to change.
So it's total reapplication to them to do that, right?
Yeah, and that's, it's not, I honestly don't know if that's a amended process or if it's a reapplication. I think that it's probably an amended process and that it's, it's just going to change the cost of that decommissioning.
Okay. So I did have a question for you on your, on your TRT report. It said all information provided will be in the formal document based on the decommissioning. And I, we got this that was date stamped October 24th. Is that what you were looking for?
No, so the reason the formal document's not crossed out is the decommissioning plan wasn't really presented in like a contract agreement style. And so all the information that needs to be in the decommissioning plan was provided, but they need to provide like a formalized document that our attorneys can review.
Okay, so that would have to be with the final?
Yeah.
Okay.
Staff have any concerns as, so let's, I think we can maybe just focus now on what's in front of us. I guess, is that far as that goes, does their staff have any concerns other than what's been marked in the TRT?
No, as for the solar that's currently in front of you, they've, yeah, very helped or very ahead of the game and pay attention to everything, they were a very well put together application.
I thought it was pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
And on their application, they're seeking a waiver for regarding stormwater management. I mean, is that something they'll deal with now or in the final?
No, so we've had some discussions about this. I actually thought it came out of the application, but.
Yeah, we're not, we're not specifically seeking a waiver.
So I think.
Yeah, go ahead.
So in the original application, they were looking at the wrong stormwater standards that they had to follow and were asking for a waiver from the flood control standards and from the, the Branch Lake watershed standards, or not the, the Great Pond watershed standards. And they are outside of a Great Pond watershed, they're within the Leonard Lake Great Pond watershed, but those are separate standards than the rest of the Great Ponds. And so they were asking for waivers for things they already didn't have to abide by. And so that just can have the application.
Any questions from the board?
I got a couple.
Sure.
Okay. Well, first of all, the road that, the drive, whatever you want to call it, that goes through the site, you know, we normally would have had 20 feet, is that correct?
So that's, that was. And so that was the update that was missing that they presented to me on late Monday and it took, and I didn't see it until late Tuesday, so they weren't able to get it into this application, but it has been done and it will be in the final. They have corrected that to 20 feet on the access road.
That, 20, the whole way?
Yeah.
Okay, so that, and that's good with you?
Yes.
Okay, and the turnarounds where they are, the hammerhead things are good with you?
Yes.
One near, one to the road, one at the end?
Yep.
Along those lines are, you know, here's the array, here goes the road. There's a lot of, you know, there's nothing on the other side of the array. My question is, do you need access to that, you know, kind of backside? I know, I saw that there was some discussion somewhere there about that.
There is some, there is some access, just like the other, the other ones, they have, they'll have a construction road around the back.
Right.
They're going to leave in place, just let it grass up and stuff like that and.
Do they have enough space for that, given the?
We're going to, like for a pickup truck, there's, there'll be enough room for a pickup truck. So our brush truck that's out here, that's not winterized, but our brush truck would be accessible to reach the back and as well as we've already done the calculations on how much, between two and a half inch hose and then forestry hose that we would need and we have more than ample to.
So you're happy with not having that formal drive or anything or on the back?
Yeah, there's an informal drive around the back.
Right.
There just won't be a formal drive like the 20-foot access road that's required.
Okay. Moving on, I'm good with that, okay. Moving on then, you said there's a six-foot chameling fence, do we have a, and I should have looked this up, but I didn't because, you know, here's staff. Is the, is a six-foot high fence enough? Well, first of all, what is the six-foot high fence for? Just to keep things out or is it supposed to be screening as well? And do we have a standard for how high it should be?
So for this project, because there's so much vegetation surrounding the project, it's not being used specifically for screening. The vegetation will be used for the buffering and screening. The fencing is more so to keep people and animals out when it can.
Okay.
But it will be raised to what our standards are.
Right, 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 I read all that.
Underway. We do not have a height, I think, for fences specifically for solar, but Lori, we have fencing height requirements in general.
The state does, nothing over six feet.
Yeah, well, and along those lines, I mean, I know that they were saying a six-foot fence, but the, but the panels themselves start at like eight. So, you know, if you're screening it, it's, you know, you can still see it right over it, but, but that's really not the purpose of that fence, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, the purpose of fence more is security.
And, and little creatures, right, okay. And tell me again, I know that we, this came up the last time we looked at one of these, the posts that, you know, you talked about the six by six post or whatever.
The corner posts?
Yeah, the corner posts, and how do they work again with keeping? I mean, it was mentioned in the same breath as the six-inch up thing, like that was going to help little woodland creatures.
It's just like the corner, two, at least two of the corner posts have to be like five inches in diameter so that they're thick enough for an animal to potentially climb out of if for some reason they're not.
Oh, they climb up on the post? Okay, okay. I thought there was some sort of space between the posts that they could scamper through, but, which would be, lots of things could go through, okay, that's good. The other thing is that it's a 20-year lease on the property and, you know, that clock has already started ticking, okay? So the expected life of the project is 20 to 30 years, but the lease doesn't even last that long. And so there's some inconsistency in terms of lives and lease times and so forth. Is that an issue? I, I don't have any big deal about that, but if it, is it going to cause any kind of problem?
No.
Relative to decommissioning and things like that?
No, so the, you know, decommissioning will be in effect at the 20-year point. Like if they haven't abandoned the lot, yeah, they could still negotiate.
But my point is that at the, at the 20-year point, they'll be beyond the lease.
Well.
Is the lease contingent upon approvals being final? It's usually.
Yeah, I, yeah, I can clarify that actually, that it's actually 20 years from when it becomes operational. So it doesn't start ticking the 20 years until it starts producing electricity.
Okay, I thought there was a document in there that was dated and signed that you had done the lease already.
Yeah, yeah, we, the lease is effective, but the way that the terminology is worded in the lease for the lease term.
Lawyer person is nodding, okay, so he's good with that?
That's the standard lease for these types of, in a project.
And I realize that the lease is renewable in the bargain?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's actually unilateral option to renew. So we have the option to renew it for an additional five-year extension up to four times. And that's mainly because when you get towards the end of useful life, you want to have an ability to reassess and evaluate for about a five-year period just to make sure that it makes sense to, based on the condition of the, of the equipment, to extend the lease for another five years.
Okay, and one last little comment about the decommissioning.
Just so in, in the event that the lease had already started and didn't line up exactly with their 20-year life, it's really not the city's problem per se, it would probably be more of the applicant's problem because like they'd have.
Oh, I, yeah, I don't disagree other than how it gets messed up with the decommissioning.
It really, I really wouldn't have, if they, for whatever reason, you know, their lease ended and they just left their stuff there, we would still have the escrow money to go and decommission it ourselves.
But if they just leave their stuff there, doesn't it go, according to the documentation that's here, doesn't it go to the lease or?
Well, yeah, so if the landlord wanted to keep it, the landlord could, I suppose, but in general, I presume they would just rather have us come and clean it up for them.
Well, I don't know, I mean, there's certain, certain references, certain references say that the salvage value of the material is, is non-zero.
Well, we'd let the landlord make a business decision.
Okay. My last pet peeve is that in the decommissioning stuff, you have that down to the nearest dollar? Get real.
It's close.
You gotta pick, you gotta pick a number though.
Yeah, no, no, you're making it close, like by the nearest thousand maybe I can live with. Anyway, just, I'm not saying you should have to change it, I just, it's crazy stuff. I am. I spent my entire life training and interpreting numbers, I'm just telling you that, it's a bad number.
So I have, I have a question based upon the potential going back to the storage facility. The possibility that that may happen. The location of that storage facility in relation to the array field as well as the location of that storage, what do you want to call it, a pod or whatever, in relation to the access roads? Because you're going to have to have more than a pickup truck to go to that, to go to those storage facilities. And then the idea is that if you're going to have to have a surface that's, you can allow a fire truck to get onto, that's going to increase your surface as far as road surfacing.
So kind of step in, so, kind of, if they come back for the solar, for the energy storage, it's essentially a revision to an already approved plan, but because they're adding a use, it has to come twice. So they're going to have to include the impervious that's from the solar on the lot, they'll have to include the impervious from their access road that already exists in their application. So like that whole, the whole.
We're going to be looking at the whole plan all over again, is what we're going to be doing, okay? Okay.
You're okay.
Well, will future city council members be able to sit on planning board meetings?
If they not sit on the board, but they can join if they're interested.
You can always, you can always sit out there. Yes.
I wonder if I get elected and otherwise, you guys will step in there.
Any other questions from the board? And I will open up the public hearing. Is anybody monitoring?
Nate, do you see anybody else on there?
I don't hear a voice from the other room, so I'll close the public hearing.
Can I have one last question?
Oh, sure.
Okay, the little access road that goes back, is that plowed?
Yes.
Is there space for the snow to go?
Yes.
Because it seems pretty tight there.
It's, it will be on your, on the final plans.
Yeah, on the addendum information that we sent, I can actually just flip it around here. We extended the fence lines out around this, so that dark hatched area, we extended the fence lines for snow storage as well as beyond this.
So you push it the entire length of that driveway?
Well, you're going to have snow on the right and left and inside of the access road going in, but.
Well, yeah, my only point was that the fence seems so close as it might be a problem.
Yeah, it, it's, there's an offset from the road and I think it's, I don't know it off the top of my head, but you do have.
Some space.
You have shoulders and then spaced from the shoulders too. And then in those areas around the turnarounds, there.
Yeah, no, I was okay with those, it was the long stretch that I was. Wouldn't see, want to see our fire guy out there stuck in the.
Any other questions?
I'm done, no, no.
All done?
I am.
All okay. Is there a motion?
I make the motion that we find that the preliminary plan of the major use site plan entitled Synor Gen Ellsworth Solar for owner Samuel Robert Shays Rippon and applicant signer, Jesus, Synor Gen Ellsworth LLC is complete. You're like, wasn't going to say that last word.
No, I knew that was the only word you were going to say.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the paper? We're the board.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks.
See you again with something.
We'll keep you up to speed on what ends up happening.
Snap comment?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we are advertising, have been advertising for the planning board members. We have one application in so far. If you know anybody who might be interested, let them know. They can send applications to me, letter of interest and resume qualifications, that sort of thing. You know, by this time, we'll know if we need one or two seats filled, presumably two, but. But yeah, so we'll, we'll have to go through that selection process in a December or January meeting. I guess just to plug, comp plan survey closes November 10th, that's coming up. So again, if you haven't taken it or know groups of people that wouldn't want to take it, feel free to share the comp plan survey with them, but mailers went out. So we probably should have a fair response rate at this point. We have a call with the consultants next week.
Which meeting do you anticipate taking the changes to council?
It'll be November 20th. For all the 2003, we're talking about, for all the 2003?
Yes.
Yeah, November 20th.
Did we get that presentation the state gave and digital copy?
You should have, I know we gave it in their pack, the packets for one meeting, but we can send it to.
Could you, could you send it back out, digital forms, if that's helpful?
Send you the workshop minutes too, that's okay too.
Yeah, that'd be great. I have my notes somewhere too.
That's all I have?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We're done.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
I do have.